Let me take this opportunity to welcome the head table here with us tonight. And to my immediate right, the Prime Minister will sit here, he's going to bless us tonight with his presence, so we're very happy for that. Next to the Prime Minister is Honorable Miriam Blanchard, who is well-known in the Watunwaven area as well too. And she'll speak with us tonight, Minister of Public Works. Next to our Minister Blanchard, we have the Honourable Ian Douglas, a veteran in the business, we all know him very well. Dangerous man in terms of politics and how he would deliver to you tonight. Minister of Trade and Employment. And next to him is the Honourable Robert Tong. And because of the importance of tourism to this area, Honourable Robert Tong has to be here as well too. He's the man who is going to do wonders for us in Roseau. And we are keeping our fingers crossed on Minister Blanchard, who stomped Danny Luke some time ago in the House of Assembly. So with these few words, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome the head table, of course your Parrot here with you tonight. And of course, we have Honourable Peter Sergio, the Minister of Education, here from the Lapland constituency, sitting right here with us. And of course, the vibrant lady from the Soufrière constituency, Honourable Dennis Charles, right here with us tonight. And this is the sort of balance we have in the Dominica Labour Party in terms of, you know, the gender. We balance our programme with women as well as men. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight I will deliver to you a sort of a report card. And I want to make it clear tonight that this is a Dominica Labour Party meeting slash Government of Dominica meeting. We expect full respect tonight. And we want to share with you some of our development programmes. Okay. Note, because of the numbers, because here I don't want to be libbing myself trying to say too many things, I want to get to the point right away, okay? Now, in Watunwaven, we have gone on to what you call a serious road development programme. Because we heard from you, and I must say, we got a lot of blows from you, I got a lot of blows from the Watunwaven area. Because you all struggled, I don't want to lie about that. You all really struggled with the road, it was terrible. But you were able to save our lives in the rest of the valley, namely, I speak here of Trafalgar, Luda, Fokany, Shofar and these areas, because had it not been for that bridge we had completed from Trafalgar to Watunwaven, we would really have been in some serious salt. So Watunwaven is still very important. We had to slow down your road project because we had to embark upon transporting the rest of the valley through Watunwaven at that time. But we have come, and the Minister Blanchard will speak in detail about the project, but just I'd like to say to you is, we are committed to finishing your road, which we have started. And I'm very, very happy to see what I've seen in the Watunwaven area in terms of a first-class road that'll take us to the next century, that's for sure. So your government will work with you on this road positively. The Minister, the Minister also speak a little about some of the other road networks in terms of the, you know, the surrounding areas in terms of connection, in terms of tourism. Now, just last week Friday, we had a little signing ceremony in the Trafalgar facility, where we signed a number of contracts for secondary roads in the Roseau Valley. And we had one for Watunwaven as well too. It is a continuation of the first five segments which we have completed already, but we wanted to complete the part from the top of the village to the first half of Savan. That was signed and a contractor from Watunwaven, Mr Alvin Charles, was there to receive this contract. And he will start very soon in creating that road. The plan, the plan for us and for me, with you, is to take that Savan road up to Island House. Some of us don't know Island House, but Island House used to be a swimming hotel many, many moons ago. So that was signed. Agriculture and Small Business. Agriculture, this week pass, we were able to deliver some fertiliser to you free, of course, any charge to you. It was fertiliser donated by your government as a gift from the Kingdom of Morocco. As you know, we pride ourselves on a serious foreign relations. And we have forged a very, very serious relationship with the Kingdom of Morocco. And every year, we receive fertiliser in terms of that gift and we share it with our people. And this is to help you with your agriculture and Watunwaven, I think you benefited. There are still maybe a few bags to deliver here and there for our people. What I urge you to do, it's free, let's make good use of it. I can't put fertiliser in food, so I'm not worried about it, I'm talking about food we eat in our kitchen. In terms of, I care about it to cook my food. So let's make good use of it with our plans and make sure everybody gets a little bite of it. And this is freedom and a gift from your government, okay? We are largely a tourism village, we understand that, but yet still in terms of our food security, we want to continue to feed our people and that's important for us. Last, not last week, the week before, we had a meeting with our small business personnel from the Ministry of Commerce, where Mr Alexander came up here. And we had a meeting in excess of 50 something people who came up here. I must say, I was very, very impressed and rather astonished that we have in excess of over 50 something small businesses in Watunwaven. So I'm very happy for that, very, very happy for that. And it shows that it's a booming village and we are just loaded with all sorts of small business and opportunities. So again, your government will honour its, will honour what it decided to do in terms of holding that meeting first. And of course, we'll have training sessions in how we can take it further. So that to me is very important. Now, to come to another very important part of small business in the Watunwaven area, as you heard, when Mr Lambert agreed for us, he mentioned about how blessed we are in terms of our natural resource. And we know Watunwaven is probably the centre, the energy centre in terms of geothermal. And we talk about thermal energy in terms of in the thermal springs. And in Watunwaven, we've been able to use it wisely and we have a number of different spas in Watunwaven. We speak here of the bongo baths coming up there, which can really do something for the tourist industry. Of course, every single spa in Watunwaven targets a different clientele. So you speak of bongo baths coming up higher up, you have Tia doing his programme slash with his cottages. Next to it, you have Screws doing a pretty serious communal type warm water programme, the warm baths. Come up the road, we have T Quaglo Show, there's another one just between. And of course, we have the natural baths as well, you know, some people go to the natural springs on the side as well too. You have Eunice on their side doing something, we also have T Pawaddy Joan doing something up there in terms of guest house and whatnot. But what I'd like to encourage you is the fact that the Minister of Tourism is here with us tonight. And the plan for us as government and the plan for me and a vision for you, and I'd like to do it in partnership with the Ministry of Tourism, is to have spoken to the Minister of Tourism already on this matter. We have liked to raise the level of the spas in Watunwaven. We are presently probably at about 1.5 in terms of star. Because I want, when people come and we say we have spas in Watunwaven, and that happened to me, that's a true story. I brought a president of a very important country to Watunwaven at night to take a warm bath, you know, after these long meetings we have there. And he said to me, you'd like to take a warm bath, so I brought him to Watunwaven. I told him we have some lovely spas in Watunwaven, and this is a true story, I always like to give a true story. And you know what he told me? We went down there, he had a very good time, good bath, everything like that. But he said to me, he tried to advise me one time, he said to me, but you have no towels here. I said, wow. So what I used to do in the Ministry of Trade when I was a minister in those days, I bought some towels, so every time the dignitaries would come, I'll give them a towel to come up there. Because we're talking, we're speaking of spas. So this is what I want to do with the, I want to partnership with the Ministry of Tourism in terms of how we can raise that level and package that product such that we can, you know, enhance it and get our people to come in. And when we speak of a spa and we can look at the musculoskeletal effect in terms of massage and whatnot. So the guys who come and they have some cash, you can come to Watunwaven and we can massage them and they got all sorts of little ailments in their muscles and we can have them working like going back to Roseau and overseas, okay? That is my plan for Watunwaven, I will take that to that next level, the spas. I have a very, very serious announcement to make tonight, especially to all our landowners in Watunwaven. As you know, I've always spoken about squatting. And as you know, we all come from the old estate of the rules long ago, when we had this estate here, not much development. And your government, the Labour Party, they're taking development very seriously. When we had all these little bridges, primitive bridges on the old estate, it was a big problem for us. And we had the workers on the estate in those days, I remember the overseer, Mr Bednau, I lived long enough to know that time. Now, what we used to do, we have scattered lands all around the place, squatting taking place, but the government came in and we were able to cut this estate up into lots and we acquired a portion of that estate for the people of Watunwaven. But we had another problem there. Some time ago, the technical staff always had to be advising government, this is not, this is not the policymakers. But we always seek advice from the technical staff and they mean good because they mean in terms of your road development, your water development, and they were putting up, they were suggesting a price for the land. But yes, I spoke with the Honourable Prime Minister and Cabinet. And Cabinet, though we disagreed, we discourage anyone to go here to squat on land, because I cannot advise anyone to squat on government land, because even if you squat on government land for three million years, you cannot own it, okay? Government has to make some arrangements to give you that land. So I will never encourage anyone to squat on government land, I've always said that very clearly. But for you, it was so important for us as a government and the Cabinet. Yesterday, we were discussing, this has been going on for a little while, but yesterday we were discussing and what we have decided to do to you, instead of raising the price of land in Watunwaven, we'll keep the land at Watunwaven at the old price. Meaning, if it was 2.50 before, we're going to keep it at 2.50 and we'll not raise it to type something for you. This is important. And I'll be honest with you, it's not anywhere, because this is prime, prime land. This is land where you have serious business in being established, the spas and whatnot, it costs money and it's more expensive than that. But we have decided we'll keep that land at 2.50 and 2.75, at the old price, so give you an opportunity to buy your land, you understand that? Alright, that's a serious programme, my people, it's not a joke at all. Now, I have a little concern with the youth, not only in Watunwaven, generally the youth globally, but more importantly, Roseau Valley and Watunwaven. And what I'd like to do is first to embrace the opportunities that we have created as government. Where young people can see themselves and the importance of themselves getting, obtaining gainful employment through any system of this government. Come up with bad ideas as well too and we'll work to you. So I want to send a special challenge to our young people here. I was very impressed when I came to this school today and I delivered in excess of almost every single child with a lovely little bag with a nice little kit in it and they were happy. And you know what they remembered me for? They say, hey, it was Santa Claus, they remember Christmas party. And I was, you know, I felt so good about that, you know why? When I got there, the kids said, hey, it's Santa Claus, so it feels like, so there was a connection. And that's important, and once, once you see your children gravitating to you, I think it spells well. So I'd like to extend that to other, you know, grown-up young persons, especially our males. So let's, let's start challenging, you know, taking, taking advantage of the challenges, sorry. Let's start taking advantage of the opportunities that exist such that we can raise our level. Now, very happy also to be part of this school where they were in excess of 40 something kids. In other parts of the valley, the population is decreasing. But Watunwaven's population, and I'm happy that the Minister of Education is right here with me tonight. And I went, I took a proper tour of the school here tonight along with the principal of the school. And there's something I will discuss with the Minister of Education based on my findings of this school. We have a lovely toilet at the back there, it's working, if anyone of us want to use it tonight, it's working. That's fine, we have a little office there, it's working, we have a little, we have our library, it's now our storeroom. But our, our kids are kind of jammed up a bit there, based on the fact that Watunwaven, we are making our children Watunwaven. And that's a good sign. It's a very good sign, because population increase is a problem for this country. So I must say, I must commend the folks at Watunwaven for really and truly, you know, honouring their responsibility in terms of, you know, making their children, supporting their children and partnering in government how we can increase the population in Dominica. So we need to do, we'll do a little more for the school in Watunwaven, very, very important for us here tonight. Okay, the housing. Housing is an issue for us of course, a lot of us have owned our lands and whatnot. I have a people here with me from the Ministry of Housing. Anyone here who is on a piece of land in Watunwaven who has not filled out a form, completed an application form for land, we have the application forms right here with us tonight. And I'd like you to be part of it such that you can complete your form and we can, you know, get you regularised such that you can own your piece of land. We're not going to raise the price on you, so the application forms are right here with us tonight. The Minister of Geothermal is here with us, I'm not going to speak much on that, he will address that. But just to say that we are moving along, pressing along with our geothermal project. And I'd like you to embrace the opportunity, because that is the only way as a Minister of Investment that we can lower the cost of energy such that we can have companies coming to Dominica to use and take advantage of lower energy prices. So the Minister will speak a little more on that. Our vendors, for example, we know you're here, we have partnered with some of the vendors in Trafalgar during the off-season. And what we have done with our vendors here is to make sure that our vendors are engaged in other means of employment during the off-season. I speak here of the cruise season, I don't want our vendors staying at home for during that little off-period there. We would like to partner more with you in terms of the NEP and using terms of various dignification programmes around the Watunwaven area. The single mothers, as you know, recently we had a serious programme in terms of the insurance where we spoke, the pilot project where we spoke of 35 years and below the mothers, especially challenges and the kids, three years and whatnot. I'd like you to take advantage of the opportunity created by this government. We have said that it's a pilot project and we are investigating and trying to understand the best way to administer it. And the hope here is to take it into a larger sort of national health insurance scheme. But my people, I'd like to say something to you as well too. Just last week, Thursday, I went to the doctor as well too, because I have, I have some insurance and I'm making sure that my insurance works for me as well too. Because as we age in life, we all are earthly mortals, we must expire one day. And as we get to the sunset days, we have to watch our health, we have to watch what we eat, we have to watch our high blood pressure. Cabinet takes the Watunwaven area very seriously, this is why we're here. And our Prime Minister is here with us tonight, so I think that speaks volume for us. So welcome here, thank you very much for coming. Okay, back to the single mothers, we're speaking about the insurance programme and the opportunities we have here. But I would like you to take advantage of what exists right now, all the various social programmes. But please, you have to take some time off on your health, must take some time off. Because yes, I see the bills coming all the time, we're helping, we will always help, because this is what this caring government is all about. But people, take a little care, be careful with yourself, because some of us allow ourselves to get weight down the wicked. And it's very painful sometimes to see you struggle, it's very painful for us and we have to escort people to the great beyond. It really hurts so hard, because we don't leave our people nowhere, when you're sick with you, some of us who have to expire on time with you, so it's just a, it's a big programme for us. So what I want to say to you tonight is take care of your health, visit your doctor regularly. I must commend the doctors in the Roseau Valley, I must say, I think sometimes they have worked. Doctor McIntyre, my brother who will, maybe he'll be the doctor for everybody here. I think he's done a great job and he continues to do a very great job. And if you love Doctor McIntyre so much, my brother, you should support his brother, Doctor McIntyre, he's there too. Okay? Thank you, John, I agree with that. If you love Doctor McIntyre, he does well for you, support his brother, so we can keep this whole programme going, that's important, my people. Right. Now, through my constituency empowerment programme and sometimes to time we receive little funds for helping constituents throughout the Roseau Valley, I have dubbed my programme in such a way where I'm sending it towards people. I want to focus my development for the Roseau Valley, on the infrastructure, yes. But I want to make sure that we target the people, because yes, my people, we want good roads as we're getting right now. But we want to make sure we take care of your needs, your health. And for me, as I've always said in every single part of the Roseau Valley, when someone comes to me, I don't see you as just a person like that, I see every part of your body. And because of the background, I will advise you as to how we can work with you. I would, as I've said all around the valley, I'm not going to talk about who is this one, that one and whatnot. I work with you, the whole body, and I've been able to help you and I will continue helping you. But you have to hold your end, you have to do your part as well too, okay? Local government, my programme for local government, we have to re-establish our local government in Watunwaven. We have had some issues and whatnot, we'll fix that up and we'll get a programme going. Because local government in Watunwaven is very important, it existed before. And anytime you have a strong local government organisation, from the people of Watunwaven and partnering with central government, that is the best formula for development for the village. So I'd like to make sure, very soon from now, we look at our development programme. But of course, we have to establish our local government programme, okay? And the local government programme in Watunwaven is always targeted at every single person here tonight, okay? The villagers in general. Tourism, as we have said, very, very big one, the Minister is here with us. And I will not speak too much on tourism, other than what I've spoken about, the spas and how we're going to continue to work. There's an issue we have, we are discussing it at the Prime Minister level, the Cabinet level in terms of the vendors and the venue over there where we vend. But before I give any details on that, I'd like to fine-tune it before I come back with you and give you a sort of a plan as to how best we think we can help in fixing up this programme. We have got there in terms of toilet facilities and get no vendors, no dignified in a manner across there, so we'll deal with that. But before I leave tonight, I would like to share a little thing with you here, a little thing and it's a true story. I don't see a lot of senior folk say that your parents would have known about it. But during Hurricane David, those of you who lived during that time, I, I like to remind people of that, you know, it's important, because I was studying in Guyana then, when Hurricane David struck, went to Trafalgar. And Watunwaven is where I spent over just the entire holiday period until I went back to Guyana, studied there. And I remember when we were able to get that helicopter to land there, my old uncle was a live in those days surgeon, Desmond McIntyre. And I went down to him, I told him with Desmond, there are a lot of folks in Watunwaven injured. I was studying animal health in those days, not a full vet yet, but you know, the love for the field was there already. And a number of the senior folks, we performed quite a few little surgeries on them, right in Mr Rose's house down there. And we were able to have our place well set up, separated our kids, the adults, and we had a lovely camp running until we got some more relief coming in. So I just want to say to you that my spirit and my heart has been with this village for a very long time. Actually, very, very deep and even deeper than some parts of the Roseau Valley. So in closing here tonight, I'd like those senior folks here tonight who remember those days when we had a very good time, the post Hurricane David, the valley hills of the hurricane in those days, to pass it on to your kids. And there's no reason why Watunwaven, this is about politics, I ain't gonna lie. And there's no reason why Watunwaven should be treating Doctor McIntyre, that we call him, and the Dominica Labour Party, because my heart has always been with you. So I want to close here tonight by telling you, I'm expecting a serious support come next time. I'm happy that some of our two-beacon goods are here with us tonight, I see them, some of my good friends. And I'm really looking forward to some serious movement come next election, which is not next year, to be honest with you, don't feel no way. We're just on a drive to educate our people and expose them to development plans. There are a lot of Ministers here who are going to speak tonight, so with these few words, ladies and gentlemen, now you say, thank you for listening to me, thank you for coming, I'm very happy to be here with you tonight.
It is indeed a pleasure to be here tonight with my colleague, Doctor Colin McIntyre, your hard-working parliamentary representative. And not just your hard-working representative, but from all of the stories I have heard from Doctor McIntyre since joining this Cabinet just over two years ago, he's not just hard-working and committed, he's also a very caring person. And I don't think any of us who've had any interaction with him tonight can doubt that he is in fact a caring person, which means, ladies and gentlemen, you're in good hands. You're absolutely in good hands, because it all starts in the heart, it all begins inside of here. And I think we owe him a round of applause for him being such a caring person, I think. But my role here is easy tonight, I'm here to support my dear colleague and to discuss with you what your Labour government has been doing for you and what are our plans for you in the short to medium term as well. Not just for the Roseau Valley, but particularly for your lovely community in Watunwaven. Like I said, I'm here to lend support to a great colleague, a colleague who I admire for his drive and persistence as it relates to lobbying to bring assistance to you ladies and gentlemen in the Roseau Valley and you, the residents of Watunwaven community. And so it is a pleasure again to be here. I am the Minister of Public Works in Port. So my conversation with you tonight is going to centre around the physical infrastructure, roads and bridges. What is it we've been doing with respect to roads and bridges? Over the last year, and particularly following Tropical Storm Erica, there were a few interventions that we had that I want to discuss with you as well. And I want to say to you, like your Parrot said to you earlier, you are important to this Dominica Labour Party government. You are important to us because we understand the importance of the Roseau Valley to the economic development of this country. And how, particularly as it relates to the development of tourism, you are a key component or element of the tourism industry, which is ever so important to this country. We acknowledge that the Roseau Valley is the area with the highest concentration of tourist attractions. Do you doubt then that you're important to us, ladies and gentlemen? You're important to this country and you're important to this Dominica Labour Party. Look around, look at how many of us are here tonight, not just to support our colleagues, but to be here with you, to listen to you and to have a discussion with each and every one of you tonight. And we also know that because tourism is important to you, it must also be important to us so we can facilitate you in being able to improve your standard of living, which is why we exist. We are here because we care about you and we're interested in seeing you have a better life for want of a better word, ladies and gentlemen. So as a caring government concerned about empowering its people and working towards the improvement of their standard of living, we plan as a government to continue to play our part in ensuring that this important tourism industry continues to thrive in the Roseau Valley. We also recognise your vulnerabilities based on your topography, which has been highlighted by the impact of recent weather events, like Erika for instance. As a result, I wish to give you this commitment tonight, that this Labour Party government is doing and will continue to do all that is in our power to ensure that we build a resilient network of roads and bridges in the Roseau Valley area. And of course, for you, my friends in Watunwaven as well. In recent times, you witnessed the results of your hard-working government, especially after Tropical Storm Erica. Immediately after what did we do, we launched a major clean-up campaign to restore access to the different communities in the Roseau Valley, and you were no different. We also saw the construction and subsequent opening of the Bailey Bridge to connect your community with Trafalgar as well. We saw retaining walls around the entire constituency. And also rehabilitation of the damaged wing walls and the underpinning of the coptole bridge, which is an important bridge to get us to your, your community that we're here tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, I've named a few of the projects just to put my presentation into some sort of context. To say to you that this is a government that cares about you, the people of the Roseau Valley, your security and your comfort. And as a result, we will spare absolutely no effort in working with you towards the further development of all of your communities. And this one that I love so much in Watunwaven. And I must point out here, that everything that I have spoken of thus far has been done because of the effort and dedication of who? Or you don't know why we're doing it? You have no idea who's representing you in the Cabinet of Dominica, ladies and gentlemen? Why are we doing what we are doing? Why did you vote for Doctor Colin McIntyre? You voted for him so he can represent you in the Cabinet of Dominica in the Parliament. And I want to say to you tonight that he's doing a good job. He's being effective in representing you, the people of Watunwaven. Are you convinced yet or you want me to say some more? You want me to say some more, I'm going to say some more, don't worry. But I sit in the Cabinet for the last two-some years and I can say to you, from all of my interactions with the Minister, particularly since moving over to Public Works in Port, he's persistent and he remains focused. And his focus is where? His focus is in making a difference in the lives of his constituents, including all of you here tonight and even those who couldn't make it tonight, but hopefully those other residents who are listening via radio or via YouTube. I want to assure you that he continues to be committed to each and every one of you. And what does that mean? I think it means he's doing a great job, ladies and gentlemen, do you agree? I want to recall something, I'm not going to take over Doctor McIntyre's stories, but I want to remind you of something. I still remember when the Parrot insisted that I take a drive with him through particularly Watunwaven. He took me to other parts of the constituency, but the first one he wanted to show me was the Watunwaven roads. And you know why he did that? He thought I was taking too long to address your concerns, that is somebody who's working for you. And he thought the best way to bring it to my attention, because he thought by just talking to me in Cabinet wasn't working. So he decided, you know what, he said my name, let me bring her and see what it looks like. And you know what the result was? Immediately after I went back to the ministry, I called all the senior staff of the Ministry of Public Works in Port and I said, listen, we have to fast track. And I see a young lady smiling, I promised her it was going to come. You see the roads have started, she's there looking at me and smiling. She came into my office and she said, I said, you know, I promise you, your Parrot brought me on the road and we are going to do something about it. Ladies and gentlemen, have you seen a difference in your road network recently? And why do you think that has happened? Do you think it was because of me? No, it wasn't because of me, it was because of your parliamentary representation. No, it wasn't because of me, it was because of your parliamentary representative. He knew just what it was going to take to get it on my radar, bring her and see it herself. So we owe a wealth of gratitude to your parliamentary representative for what has happened thus far. And I'm using my words very carefully, I'm saying thus far. And by saying that, you know what that means, there's more to come. I came here when that project has just started and I know what you went through. I met a number of you while I walked the streets, I was here, I've developed a little sweetheart right here in front here from coming almost every day for a couple of weeks. I know what you went through when we were rehabilitating the roads and I felt your pain as well. But I don't know about you all, now when I drive on the rehabilitated sections, you think I'm from Watson Wavon because I am proudly driving on them, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks to Dr. McIntyre again. And I must say to you that it wasn't just Dr. McIntyre, because obviously we played, the other people played their part. When we approached the Honourable Prime Minister, who's also the Minister of Finance, with our budget for those sections of road, I think it was seven, 1,710 metres of road. For just over $2,000. Initially, the estimate was much less and without thinking the Honourable Prime Minister, absolutely. Why did he not even hesitate to say yes? Because you are important to him too, you're not only important to Dr. McIntyre, you're also important to the Honourable Prime Minister and the Dominica Labour Party. And I can say that to you, that when we went back to the finance minister, because we thought in some sections, if we're doing the road, might as well do the road properly. So some sections, we thought, we wanted to shave the cliff so the road could be much wider and you've noticed the road is much wider. PM didn't ask one question, okay, approved. Ladies and gentlemen, who can doubt in our midst tonight that this is a caring Labour Party government who cares about each and every one of you? And I have to point out before I move on that road though. Every contractor who has worked on your road is from what area? All of them from the valley, thank you, what does that say to you? This is a government who's concerned and who's focused on developing its people, on empowering its people. And how have we done this in case of this one project? We've hired only local contractors who have observed, only hire their own people from the community. So what does that mean? It's a win-win for all of us, you know. The money, as much as possible, that money is going to stay in the community. Because if the local contractors hiring local people, when they spend on, on goods and services, hopefully they spend it within the community. So more money circulated in the community, more people are better able to look after themselves. Why? Because this Labour government cares about you and everything we do is strategic, everything we do is based on what is good for you. And ensuring that at the end of the day, we can do what we can to improve your standard of living and improve your position to allow you to look after yourself, ladies and gentlemen. And I'm giving you all of these stories because from time to time, I hear different things from people talking. You know, everybody has an opinion and it's okay, we all should have opinions, we're all intelligent people in Dominica. But sometimes like everything intelligent people say is true and sometimes they know it's not true too. My okay, anyway, so I'm telling you tonight, so that, you know what they say? I'm telling you tonight, so when you hear the fake news and the misinformation being put out there, usadiyo, awa. That's all I want you to do then, awa, look someone even very better, stop our way, PS guys. But we have to do that and I think it's important for us to do our own fact checking. And that's one of the things that I try to do because it's important, because sometimes you hear so much negativity and you hear so many things that are not accurate. That it makes you wonder, so times like this, I'm happy that you are here tonight, I'm happy that you are here to learn from your government what it is we are really doing for you. And how it is going to impact on each and every one of you here tonight. Going back to the, to the rehabilitation of, of the sections of, of Watson Wavon. We have in excess of $600,000. Money to complete that section that is obviously in need of completing, you can see the two sections where the pavement is. And there's just the normal road that we had it before, that section is going to be done soon. And already approved is in excess of $600,000 to do this. What we have tried to do, we knew some of the challenges that we encountered when we had the first couple lots going on. And we've tried to learn from the experience that we had back then. So what we are doing is based on the advice of my technical staff, we're going to hire a heavy equipment operator to do the shaving of the cliff. Because there's going to be a lot of excavation for that lot that was going on. So we're going to hire someone with heavy equipment to deal in order so that it can happen quickly. Because I know some of people are concerned, it's time to start this other lots, you know, the tourism season is on us. Ladies and gentlemen, let me assure you, we know tourism is your bread and butter. We will do nothing to interfere with your bread and butter, with your livelihoods. That leg of the project will be done before the tourism, cruise tourism season begins. I should also add as well though, that another reason, as your parrot had mentioned as well, you were a savior in December. When we had an edge failure in the Cabanis area, all of the traffic to the Rose Valley had to be redirected, thank you, through your community. And you were really good about it, ladies and gentlemen, and I want to thank you for the patience, thank you for understanding that suddenly you had so many cars driving up and down in your community. And I think you handled it very well and I want to say congratulations and thank you to each and every one of you here tonight for that. On my way up here tonight, I made, I noticed something as well. We've not been able to finish all of the sections like I said that we planned to and I realised there are some sections that need some urgent attention. And I want to give you that assurance, we're going to come and see what we can do for you. In the interim, while the rest of the plans unfold, we're going to do what we can to ensure that your drive to your, your home, your community is going to be a little smoother. So please don't lose faith in us, you see, we came through for you. Couple of months ago, we told you we're coming to the valley and not everybody believed us, but you can see we keep our word, right, ladies and gentlemen? And we're going to keep our word to, to you this time again. Because of the closely constituency and the fact that your livelihoods are interconnected through tourism, what happens in one community affects another. So in our efforts at putting in place the physical infrastructure that would create and enable an environment for growth in the tourism industry in the Rose Valley. This government just invested $1.6 million in Papeot, the Papeot area, to construct a river defence wall. In order to avert a complete failure of the road. So that wall is there to do what? To protect the road so that we don't have another situation, for instance, like we had at Cabanis. Then that would be a problem for our friends in Trafalgar and the tourism industry in Trafalgar. So I am saying that although it's not directly with you, I am trying to say to you and to prove to you, not in just words only, but through examples. That this Dominica Labour Party considers you to be very special people, ladies and gentlemen. And we are not turning our backs on you, we are spending money, we're investing money to build your infrastructure because you are important to us. Also, I want to speak about ongoing works in the Cabanis area. We all know what happened in Cabanis right after Christmas, we had a road edge failure and we had to redirect traffic because it was deemed unsafe for persons to pass. And again, I want to say congratulations to you for being so understanding as we redirected traffic to your quiet community. But every time I think about Cabanis, I smile and I smile why? I smile because unlike what everybody or some, not everybody, I take that back, wrong choice of words. Unlike what some people will say to you, your Dominica Labour Party is not sleeping, ladies and gentlemen. You notice how quickly we moved in to do something in Cabanis? It didn't, in, uh, Labor Catwa Vai, thank you, absolutely, ladies and gentlemen. We moved rather swiftly because we understood it was an important area, the people were important. So clearly not just me think you guys are warm and friendly. The Honourable Prime Minister, who's very open and free to approve in funds for this constituency, also agrees. Because if he doesn't approve, it can't happen, ladies and gentlemen. So I think this is further proof to you of how important you are to us. Moving forward, ladies and gentlemen, I want to say to you that we're not stopping with what you've seen so far and what we have spoken about either. Moving forward, designs for the rehabilitation of sections of road from the Coptole Bridge to the Mon Prosper Bypass. Will be completed soon within the Ministry of Public Works and Ports. In addition, the ministry is actively working to engage consultants to prepare estimates for other sections of road is in your community. As well as in the rest of the constituency. And that consultancy will also look at the design of new bridge structures, not only in your constituency, like I said, in your community, but in the Rose Valley constituency as well. But I don't have to ask you why we're doing this, because you already know why we're doing it, we do it because you're important, because the tourism industry is thriving here. We need the tourism industry so the economic activity can continue, so the economy can grow. If the economy is growing, people are getting new jobs, people have money in their pockets, everybody's smiling, everybody's happy. At the end of the day, you know what our focus is and this is what is driving and pushing us to continue to work hard to make you smile. Because if you smile, we are happy and I know you're going to smile if you can see better lives for each and every one of you. So ladies and gentlemen, this is what is pushing us to do what it is we're doing. And I'm not sure if we have anybody from Loda in our midst or whether they're listening. And I want to say to those residents from Loda and even those of us who are here who probably visit that area, that the works at Providence will begin soon. You'll be happy to learn that the Honourable Prime Minister and Minister for Finance, this week approved the contracts for the works at Providence. That contract of $1.6 million, you hear the size of the investments we're doing in this, in this constituency? $1.6 million alone is going to be for that project in, in Loda. And that sum will include, or the, the money is going to go towards the realignment of the road, slope stabilisation. And the construction of retaining walls, drainage structures and road pavement. Ladies and gentlemen, a number of interventions or projects that I've discussed with you this evening, how do you think some of them are going to be financed? By the CBI, most certainly, what does that mean for us? Do I have to say to you how important that CBI programme is to any one of us here tonight? How many of us enjoy that new road right, led us right into here tonight? How do you think that project was financed, ladies and gentlemen? By the CBI. So I think we can all say that the CBI money invested in this constituency, in this community, has benefited all of us here tonight. So that means it's an important source of revenue for your government, yes? Because let us say the Honourable Prime Minister wanted to do the roads anyway, because we already established you're important to him and to the Dominica Labour Party. If there was no CBI, how would that road be financed? Where would that $2 million come from? We would have to pay more taxes, so I don't know about you, you know which one I prefer? Me too, I think all of us prefer the CBI to that. And I want to say to you tonight that the CBI programme, under the management and vision of the Prime Minister, has been growing by leaps and bounds. And it's not an accident, it has been growing by leaps and bounds because of his personal commitment and attention to the programme. The Prime Minister can tell you at any one time what's going on with the programme, because we're not the only persons involved in that programme, not just in the Caribbean, but around the world. He personally monitors that programme to ensure that we continue to have a competitive edge. If you have a competitive edge, you know what that means, you're always in the front, you're always in the front. And because of that, the Prime Minister has spent a lot of his personal time travelling around the world, promoting our programme. And what do you think the result has been, ladies and gentlemen? We now have the best CBI programme in the world. I think we all deserve, we all should stand and say a big thank you to the Honourable Prime Minister for all of his efforts in making us the number one CBI in the world. Ladies and gentlemen, as I end, I say God bless our beautiful nature, Al Dominica. And may God continue to bless our island and this government so that we can continue to look after you. And just as importantly, that we continue to have the best CBI programme in the world. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Welcome to the community, the beautiful community of Watson Wavon. I want to assure you that the government of Dominica is working for you and working smartly for you. Because if you prosper, the country will also prosper. It has been some time since I was in your area, but I can assure you, the last time I was here, I spent two days in your beautiful valley. I started at Bongo Baths, up to Tears, to Teque Glosio, to La Piti Powerdy, all the way to Papeot and many other areas to name a few. I want to assure you that I listened to your concerns attentively and I also took notes. But most importantly, as soon as I left your area, I began seeing how we could put things in place to improve on tourism, not only in your area, but in Dominica as a whole. Because as you know, anyone who comes to Dominica, if you ask any Dominican, tell me three places that you must go when you visit Dominica. Guess where is the first one? Trafalgar, Watson Wavon. So you are one of the number one spots in Dominica that every single visitor loves to go to. And it's not only visitors, especially our locals, we love to come to your hot water spas and enjoy and rejuvenate ourselves. Many other persons go there for other reasons too. But when I came here and I said I listened very attentively and I made sure I took down the proper notes. And there were about four main priority areas that the stakeholders spoke about. One of them was the, the poor state of the roads, inadequate access to, to finance for their businesses, for their existing businesses or to start up the new business. Some persons said that we needed to market Dominica more so we could have more persons coming to Dominica. And especially you in the, in the, um, who are dependent on the cruise business, you wanted more ships to come to Dominica. But very importantly, you also wanted the ships to come back during the summer, the summer months. However, it has worked out in the best way to an extent, whereas during the summer months, some of the beautiful ladies of, of the area have used that opportunity to plant and make your area look as beautiful as possible. So within that time, I drove here and I made sure I used my car and I can tell you, it was a serious experience. And today, I'm very happy to see that the roads are in a much better condition for you, the residents of, um, Watson Wavon and Trafalgar. And also for the visitors who are going to come here. It's very important for the visitors also because many times you have visitors on the coaster buses. And they have a very bad, bumpy type of experience. And what happens sometimes when they go back, they ask for refunds and unfortunately, the tour operators have to give them a refund. So as the Honourable Miriam Blanchard said, there is more work to be done and the intention is to ensure that all the roads are repaired before the new season opens. To ensure that you are going to enjoy the roads, but very importantly too, the monies that a lot of you make as a result of tourism, the visitors will have a much better, um, experience. So even I too, in addition to Dr. McIntyre, in Cabinet, we always lobby to ensure that we can get your roads done and repaired on a timely basis. With regards to access, some persons said, you know, something, we needed funds to upgrade our properties, to upgrade our restaurants, to upgrade our hotels. And I can say to you again, the government of Dominica has listened and many of you would have heard that using the funds on the citizenship by investment programme. $15 million has been put into the national, to the aid bank in Dominica whereby persons who are into the hotel business or persons who are into the restaurant. or persons who are into the restaurant business can access those funds at only 3% per annum. They have one year. You can take that loan, you can work your business, you can build your business, you can start selling and you can take 12 months before you can start paying back that loan. No one else in the world, I think, has such an opportunity. And I think we really need to thank the government of Dominica for putting such a wonderful facility in place. With these funds, you can use those funds to grow your business, but very importantly to meet the standards of the international market. So when persons come to Dominica, what they see and what they see in the pictures and what they expect, will you will meet their expectations. In addition to that, there's another source, the small business grants, which is administered by the Ministry of Commerce. A grant means that you can access as much as 15,000 dollars to start your own small business or to improve on your small business. Where else can you get access to funds at no interest, you don't have to pay back? However, you want to ensure that whatever business it is, is a bona fide business and it's a serious business that will allow you to employ yourself or to employ other persons. So I ask you to take advantage of all these wonderful facilities that the government of Dominica has provided to you and for you based on the feedback we have gotten from you. So as I said, the funds, all of these funds have been put, have been provided, have been made possible by the Citizenship by Investment Program. So again, as the Honorable Blanchard said, it's a very important program. But the important thing is that these opportunities are there before you. You have to try your best to capitalize on them. Don't let someone else come to Dominica and begin to capitalize. Dominica is still virgin, there's lots of opportunities. We as Dominicans have to capitalize on as many of them as possible before other persons begin to come to Dominica and capitalize on these opportunities. With regards to marketing, some persons said to us, you know something? Dominica needs to market itself more and better. In order for you to grow any business, you must have a proper marketing strategy and you must have a proper marketing campaign. Again, the government of Dominica is listening because if you succeed, the whole country succeeds. In 2014, our marketing budget was 4 million dollars. Ladies and gentlemen, today, 2016, 2017, our marketing budget is 8.5 million dollars, double what it used to be. And what I can assure you is that I come from the private sector and we are ensuring that we use every single dollar wisely to get the best possible returns on every dollar that we spend. Take for example, we had marketing reps in all of the different countries around the world. The USA, Canada, Europe, England, the first West Indies. Guess what? We were not pleased with the results, we changed all of them. Again, just to ensure that we get the best possible results. And I can say to you, the results are coming in and I will talk to you a little bit more. So a lot of you may have seen recently that you have a lot more positive stories about Dominica. Beautiful stories of the different sites and places. Again, that doesn't happen by choice, by chance. It has happened because we have invited those writers to come to Dominica and write stories about Dominica. But I want to say thank you to all the Dominicans who have interacted with these people. Because remember, when we invite them to come to Dominica, they're going to go to Teque Glosso by themselves, they're going to go to your place by themselves, they're going to go all over by themselves. Pardon me? Le Piti Paudi. But if we, if you don't give them the best possible service, they're going to write a horrible story. So I want to say thank you to all the Dominicans who have given all of these writers great experiences so that they have written such beautiful stories of our lovely country of Dominica. So hats off to you and continue doing the great work that you've been doing. Because remember, when someone comes to your business, they want to have a fantastic time. Nobody wants to get bad service. Nobody wants to say hello and then you turn your back or say troops. Everybody wants beautiful, lovely service so they can go back and tell their friends and family, when I came to Dominica, I had a fantastic time. When I came to Dominica, the Dominicans made me feel like I was a family member. So again, thank you very much for doing this. We have to do more so that more persons will want to come to Dominica. The cruise industry is extremely important, especially for your area. And again, the cruise industry is a very sensitive industry. When you see persons come on the cruise ships and they go back on the boat, the cruise ships make sure a fair amount of these individuals fill out surveys to say, how was the bus ride? How was the conductor? How was the cleanliness of the area? They measure us on all of these things and before our scores were very low. But now we are looking at all of these scores and we've been putting measures in place to ensure that we can improve on our scores. So that when the cruise ship decides where, which countries are we going to go to? There are 16 countries, however, we can only go to five countries. What we want is that they're going to say Dominica has to be one of those countries that they go to. And they will choose Dominica one because the scores are very good. And two, they also make a significant return on them one. Because all of us are in, 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 in business to make a profit. Nobody's going to bring a ship here just to make, you make money, they too also have to make money and their visitors must have a fantastic time in Dominica. So we've been doing a lot of work, trying to make sure our city is as clean as possible. You've been doing work in terms of the planting and making sure the area is clean. We've even hired security guards, additional security guards in the city of Rosa just to make sure persons are not pulling people's chains, to make sure they feel more secure and safe in the city of Rosa and for Dominica. We've done lots of training courses again so that the service that you provide with persons are better. One of the great scores that we got out of the 30 something countries, Dominica is ranked number eight as it pertains to our guided tours. Because our tour guides onboard do a fantastic job. And one of the things that we're putting in place now is to ensure that every single bus will have a tour guide onboard. One, it means the driver of the bus doesn't have to turn back. Imagine I'm driving a bus and the visitor is not used to our narrow roads and he's turning back, so you can't even hear my voice. He's turning back and talking, imagine how scared they're going to be. So if the driver is focusing on the road, you have a tour guide onboard explaining everything that they see, you can well imagine the great experience that the people are going to have. And when that happens to the people, tip even more. So it means everybody's benefiting as a result of that. We also have something called a crisis management team. And unfortunately, in life, there will be accidents. And recently, you heard of an accident where someone was trying to overtake an individual and they ran into a bus and unfortunately, a lady died and other persons were injured. But the government of Dominica, we have what we call a crisis management team. Even the hospital did a fantastic job in ensuring that everything went well. And I can say to you, a few days after that accident, even if you heard all of the... I'm trying to get a nice word. All of the inaccurate and negative news that persons were spewing on the radio stations. The owners, the captain of the ship wrote us and said to us, guys, thank you very much for doing an excellent job in taking care of our people. And Dominica is one of the countries where we get good ratings. Whenever we go to the conferences now, they say you know something? Dominica has an excellent crisis management team in place. So that when these things happen, we're not going to tell you every single thing that happens. The most important thing is to take care of the people and get them out as quickly as possible. So we're doing a very good job of that and we have to continue doing that. But many of you, you're very concerned about the summer season. Even I am concerned about the summer season. Many years, we had up, in 2009, we had up to 500 and something visitors coming to Dominica. And when Carnival Cruise Lines pulled out, it went all the way down to about 190,000 people. And obviously, many persons lost jobs as a result of that. There was no more ships during the summer season, which means everybody was affected as a result of that. In order to change the cruise ship schedule, it takes about two years for them to do that. And I can say to you, the scores that I mentioned earlier, our scores are getting better because we've put things in place. And as you can see, the number of ships coming to Dominica has been increasing. But what I want to say to you is that as those numbers increase, we cannot let down our guard. There's no way we can let down our guard because the second that we do that, it will reflect in the scores and they will stop coming to Dominica again. So this year, 2017, 2018, but let's, let me tell you, 2016, 2018, we had 275,000 visitors coming to Dominica on over 160 vessels. 2017, 2018 is going to be a fantastic year for Dominica and for all of the cruise, cruise ship stakeholders. Why I say this to you? And again, I like to be very careful. So I went back to the port, I said, before I can say anything about these numbers, call back every single ship and ask them to confirm, are you coming this year, 2017, 2018? They did that and the numbers are showing that for this year, last year we had 275,000 people. This year, we're expecting 422,000 people to Dominica. Last year, we had 160 vessels, this year is going to be 225 vessels. So that is 65 more vessels coming to Dominica. Ladies and gentlemen, we are working very smart and hard for you. But as I said, we must ensure that when persons come to Dominica, we work properly. So some of the negative things that we do, let me just tell you one negative thing that we do. And a member here actually was telling me about it. I said, do me a favor, go back to that area and just make sure what you told me is not true. And she said, you know something, some of the bus drivers, they will hustle, some of the visitors rush them to the top of the hill and show them the waterfall far away and say to them, that's the waterfall. This is the tour that you paid for. And unfortunately, the government of Dominica has not fixed the road, so you can't go over this, have to take you back. Now just imagine the score that person is going to give us when they go back on that ship. Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, we've changed and we've upgraded the laws, the tourism regulations. But the challenge I have right now is that many of us are afraid to report the persons who are giving us the bad reputation. It's only a few of them, it's not many of them, maybe five, six, seven. But that one score, you remember when you went to school? Just one bad grade affected your entire average. We have to ensure that we weed out those who are giving Dominica a bad name. Okay, so I'm looking forward to you to helping us do our job so that we can attract even more visitors when they come to Dominica. So when you hear persons say that nothing is happening in tourism, it is not true. It is fake news. And that's why you have to listen to both sides. And that's why we are here having all of these town hall meetings to present you with the real news, the true news, so that you now can begin to prepare for that season. Just imagine how many additional buses will be coming through your village, through your community in 2017 and 2018. As I said, it takes some time to make a significant change. Guess which cruise line is coming back to Dominica? Can I get an amen? But more importantly, as Dr. Mack said, many of the wonderful ladies of the area, during the summer months, they have to find alternative work to do. We have confirmed with Carnival Cruise Lines for the season 2018, they will be starting back in April, which means they will be back in the summer months. Your government is working for you. They will also say to you that some of us are not really interested in, in the tourism, not the tourism but in the, in the cruise business. So we have Le Piti Paudi, their concern is the stayover visitor. And why is she more concerned about the stayover visitor than stayover visitor? Guess what? A cruise visitor spends eight hours here. They spend on average 60 US, right? Always a lot of them. But that only equates to about 10 to 15% of the tourism dollars they spend in Dominica. The most important part is our stayover visitor because they stay between seven to nine days in Dominica and they spend between 300 to 400 US a day when they're in Dominica. So again, that is where our main focus is and that is why we're spending our money smartly to market. We're bringing more journalists to come to Dominica so that they can spread all these beautiful stories of Dominica. We have the marketing budget in place and we put it in place to ensure that we can entice persons to come to our beautiful country of Dominica. We're working on improving our air access to Dominica. We continue to help and work on upgrading our sites, training so that they have a much better experience when they come to Dominica and it is working. So just for you to understand, in 2016, our stayover arrivals increased by 5.2%. The previous year had gone down, especially when we had Tropical Storm Erica. Our airport was closed down for about two months. In addition to that, Liat gave us a raw deal, they didn't come back with a full schedule until about June that year. So it truly impacted especially on our hotels in terms of the numbers. So our numbers are going back up to where it should be. For the period January, January 2017 to April 2017, our arrivals for January to April have grown by 13%. Ladies and gentlemen, we're working smart. We're doing as much of the right things that we need to do to attract more people to come to Dominica, to spend more money in Dominica. But guess who benefits the most? You benefit. The government will benefit because hopefully you will pay some taxes, you will pay some VAT and that money comes back to the government. But the bulk of that money stays in your pockets in the hotels, the bus drivers, the tour guides, the restaurant owners. So we continue to work in your best interest. For April 2017, we actually saw a growth of 51%. I know we're not going to be able to maintain that throughout the year but our goal is to maintain a 5% growth across the year. And that is part of what we call our Tourism Master Plan, which guides where we're going and how we want to go. So your government of Dominica has put things in place. We are achieving those benchmarks, but I like to push the envelope as high as possible and the Prime Minister is always pushing us even more to get, to get the best possible results. So this is very positive news for Dominica. I'm saying this to you so that you can prepare for it. Those who are best prepared will reap the best results, okay? So those of you who are here who are interested in business, those of you who are in business, as I've said to you, there's a small business grants of 15,000 dollars that you can access if you have a great business plan to start a business, to help with your business. Those of you who are into hotels and restaurants, there's 15 million dollars available to you at 3% to expand on your business and to grow your business as the tourism sector in Dominica begins to grow. We continue to work very hard in terms of ensuring that our sites and there's much work being done on sites. Even as we speak right now, this is the Watnawaven Sulfur River Trail is being worked on. I'm told it's at about 85% complete and we're hoping that we can complete that in the very near future. A lot more work is being done. As Dr. Mack said, there are two things that I really want to see how we can get working on is the the washroom facilities and the vendor area. But again, it's a challenge, the land does not belong to government. The government doesn't want to just go and acquire individuals' land. So we have to speak with the individuals and see how we can come with ways and means to put a proper vendor facility and washroom facilities so that our vendors are more comfortable. But once our vendors are more comfortable and our visitors are more comfortable, they will spend more time and hopefully spend more money in those areas. So we continue to ensure that all of our sites are up to a particular standard so that persons can experience them and enjoy them better and better. We're working on ensuring that we train more tour guides so that more persons can be employed. But very importantly, to improve the experience of the visitors when they come to Dominica. So as I have said to you, we are here, our role, especially my role, is to ensure that we improve on our tourism product. We can attract more persons to come to Dominica and when they come to Dominica, they have a much better experience. And I can say to you, it is working. And I want to say thank you to all of you who are working together because we can't do it by ourselves. Because if we put beautiful marketing campaign out there, if we have all the planes coming to Dominica, but when they come to Dominica, they have a horrible experience, they're going to come back, they're not going to tell their friends and family. So thank you very much for doing an excellent job. We all together have to continue working hard to ensure that any little issues that we see, we can fix them. Many times, sometimes people sees negative things or something broken, the first action should not, should not be to post on Facebook for the world to see. Send it to the Ministry of Tourism, send it to the Ministry of Public Works. If after some time we're not taking the action, do what you have to do, but give us a chance to fix it. And as you can see, the government of Dominica is committed to making those changes for your benefit, to improve on our communities for our visitors so that all of us have jobs, all of us have businesses so that we can take care of our families. So thank you very much for listening. I look forward to your comments and your feedback. But again, we're here to serve you. Thank you very much. Honorable Dr. Colin McIntyre, Minister for Economic Development and Planning and Parliamentary Representative for the Rose Valley constituents. It's very good to be here in Waterwaven this evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Honorable Prime Minister, Dr. Roosevelt Skerritt, Honorable Robbie Tong, Minister for Tourism, Honorable Miriam Blanchard, Minister for Public Works and Ports, Honorable Peter Sejja, Honorable Dennis Charles, Honorable, sorry, Nicholas Esprit, who is here first, I want to recognize you. All the good people of Waterwaven and the Rose Valley, good evening. It is a pleasure for me to be here. It is a pleasure for me to be here. This area is one of the most popular areas in the Commonwealth of Dominica and I want to recognize that. We have the great renowned spas in this area. Everybody in Dominica knows about places like Tia and Teque, Lushu and Scroos. And now we have new ones coming along like the Escape and the Sulfur River Tours. And I can tell you, anybody who mentions coming to Dominica as a tourist or anybody who are Dominicans who have lived abroad will always come here to Waterwaven to enjoy your natural resources and you are blessed, brothers and sisters. And that is why it is important, we see it as important, to go around the country, meeting you, meeting the people, interacting with you, hearing from you, hearing your ideas as we go to another budget, what it is we can do for you so that we will continue, so that we can continue to better your lives, ladies and gentlemen. We can continue to develop this country. We can continue the little resources that we have to implement innovative ideas to ensure that all of us continue to enjoy a better standard of living in the Commonwealth of Dominica. And that is what we have been doing. Because never forget, the people who forget their history will be like a tree without roots because your history is your root. That is upon which the foundation of our lives as individuals and of our society as a collective is built. And when we inherited the government of this country, this country was on the brink of a precipice, brothers and sisters. That is where the United Workers Party had brought this country, let us not forget that. So now that God have blessed us and we are enjoying the blessings of God and the hard work of this government, we cannot forget where we were in nineteen ninety-nine, brothers and sisters. We cannot forget that. We cannot forget when civil servants couldn't get their salaries at the end of the month. We can't forget, how can we forget that? We cannot forget when civil servants' contribution to the Dominica Social Security could not be paid. The treasury of Dominica was empty. The country was broke. And even as the country was broke, they continued with recklessness. They went to Trinidad and they mortgaged the country at commercial rates, a hundred million dollars which they knew they couldn't repay at fourteen percent. Today you have this government putting monies in the aid bank, brothers and sisters, for farmers and for people in tourism like you at the lowest interest rate in the Caribbean, three percent. With grace periods, the farmers can now go to the aid bank and get their own at cheap percent to expand their farms. Today more than ever, Dominican fresh produce is the most sought-after commodity in the region. Everything we can plant now can be sold on the regional markets thanks to the work of the Honorable Roosevelt Skerritt and this Labour Party government, brothers and sisters. And when they tell you about the Citizenship by Investment Programme, this is not something Dr. Honorable Roosevelt Skerritt get up in his bed one Friday morning like a madman and implement. That is not so at all. This programme, after bananas, was on the decline in nineteen ninety-three. Through no fault of anybody, the bigger banana-producing countries took us to court the World Trade Organization and said that it was unfair for Dominica and Windward Island bananas to enter the European market at preferential treatment. Everybody had to go on the same terms and conditions. The WTO agreed and we lost those preferential treaties. So Eugenia Charles, who was the Prime Minister at the time, came up with the novel idea to have the Economic Citizenship Programme. And that was the programme she was going to use to build the Lyu River Hotel, brothers and sisters. United Workers Party was just formed and they criticized the programme. They went down to Lyu and they were shouting across the bridge to the people developing the hotel, Ching Chong Go Home. That is what they were doing. And that is where that programme started. When Eugenia Charles started the programme, every potential applicant had to come down to Dominica for an interview. When Edison James became Prime Minister of the country, he decided no need to come down. Forget about coming, we will come up to you wherever you are and interview you. He made changes to the programme. And he as the Prime Minister was not the Minister of Finance at the time, yet he had the access to the escrow account. It is this government under Honorable Roosevelt Skerritt who placed checks and balances on the system to the point where today, no politician, including the Prime Minister, does not have access to the citizenship account, the escrow account. He has to apply to either the Financial Secretary or the Manager of the Institution, who runs the institution, Ambassador Nantan, or the Budget Controller. The account is now managed by public servants, brothers and sisters. We have tightened up the programme. We have international firms who do due diligence on every single applicant. A due diligence in ordinary terms like a police record. For you to go for a visa in Barbados, you have to go police headquarters and go ICID and get your police record. Every applicant has to go through a due diligence process. And the due diligence process is not controlled by the government of Dominica. It's not the Prime Minister or any member of cabinet doing the due diligence. It is international firms around the world, independent firms, that the client have to pay and foot the bill. And these international investigation firms do a due diligence on every applicant. Who was your mother? Who was your father? What school you went to? Who was your teacher? How many times you married? Where you lived? What job you had? Who you work for? Who you employed? Every single situation is investigated. That envelope is sealed and it is sent not to the client but to the government of Dominica. And then the government opens that envelope. And if there is any adverse report on any potential applicant, that applicant is immediately denied from citizenship, brothers and sisters. Yes, some people may fall through the cracks. When United Workers Party was in power, there was an Australian fugitive called Christopher Kays. So no programme in the world is foolproof, brothers and sisters. No programme is foolproof. But we have the checks and balances in place to ensure for the most part that we are running a clean and credible programme. And that is what they don't like, brothers and sisters. I mean, United Workers Party has a reputation for tearing down everything good that has to come to Dominica. They were formed on that, that is their character. We would have had our international effort years ago. In nineteen eighty-nine, when Eugenia Charles, the great hero of Dominica, were friends with the Americans for inviting them to rescue Grenada from the hands of the revolutionaries who had assassinated the Prime Minister and members of his cabinet in nineteen eighty-three in Grenada. Eugenia Charles, as head of the OICS, asked the Americans to help Grenada out of its situation. As a result of that, Eugenia Charles, Prime Minister of Dominica, became friends with the Americans. And they said, what can we do for you? And the great Mamu said, our greatest deed at this point is at international airport. The President of America said, no problem, we will send the Army Corps of Engineers here. Just like how Dr. the Honorable Roosevelt Skerritt got the Venezuelans to break the mountains to expand our airport and we have night landing. The Americans were prepared to come down to do the international airport. Edison Chenfield James. Ladies and gentlemen, that is not a joke. Zapabla gusam. That is history of Dominica. Roach to the American government telling them, do not come to interfere in Dominica's internal affairs because an election was pending in nineteen ninety. And if they come down now, it will look like that they are giving the Freedom Party an unfair advantage. And today, how many years later, my mask not so good? Twenty-something years later, it takes young Dr. Honorable Roosevelt Skerritt to give us at international airport, brothers and sisters. And it is because of the Citizenship by Investment Programme, we are able to do that. So when Lennox Linton leaves Dominica, you live in your home, brothers and sisters. In every family, you have your liquor fights, you have your arguments, brother and sister making noise. But we do not go outside and send stone inside the house. If your father die and leave a piece of property for you and your siblings, you cannot be so vexed that he didn't give you upstairs of the house, you live in downstairs. You burning down the house? Where you will live when you burn down the house? You live in and you go in quiet America on one of the most popular internationally recognized shows, CBS. And you blackballing the country and saying, we have passport on how we call it mail order programme? When you know that it's not true? As a Dominican, why is your sense of patriotism? Why is your sense of statemanship? Okay, okay, you caused the government to fall. You come, they tell you, come out, stop your demonstration at three o'clock in Roseau. You light fire in the street, you mash up people's businesses. Ordinary brothers and sisters like you and I who try to earn a living. When you mash up the country and you get into government, what it is you will have to govern when you get there, brothers and sisters. When you mash up the programme, when you deprive people who are seventy years and older, people who have worked hard in this country, farmers who went to their gardens to feed their communities, fishermen, people who were midwives going around helping people in labour to bake their babies. They used to call them no so-and-so and no so-and-so. People who had bakery baking bread for us to eat because they didn't work for government. They do have a little pension. Today, out of the goodness of the heart of the Prime Minister, this government, we are giving them three hundred dollars so that they can live the rest of their life in pride and dignity to buy a jill of oil, a pound of rice, a half pound butter for them to live in dignity, brothers and sisters. You against that? You against that? You calling them greedy, brother? Your own Dominican fellow man? Which country you want to run? This is the same brothers and sisters that you expect to go to the polls and endorse you as a leader in this country? But say so, no so, gusam. I mean, come on, man, tell me. I mean, politics is politics, but there's a point beyond which you must not go, brothers and sisters. When we have people who have been at their home, the government send them to study. The government give them a scholarship, bring them back to Dominica and they are job hunting, brothers and sisters. And the government says, while you are job hunting, you go to an interview. Every employee telling you, I would have employed you, you know, but you don't have experience. So the government came up with a plan to allow these people, no matter what your stage in life is, to gain some job experience through the National Employment Programme. And while I'm at it, let me congratulate every single intern in the Rose Valley, including Waterwaven, for the great job that you continue to do under the National Employment Programme. And now, I am not the Prime Minister of Dominica, I'm a lowly Minister of Trade and Employment. The Prime Minister is here to speak, but I can tell you, I feel certain that as long as this government is in power, the National Employment Programme will continue, brothers and sisters. Rest assured, rest assured. And no power that rise up against us will prevail because the people are with us, brothers and sisters. It is you who have put us there. And constitutionally, when election comes about in the next five years, it is you who will decide based on the work that we have done for you, who will enjoy the preceding five years, brothers and sisters. I mean, look at the washroom programme. Look at the washroom programme. We have developed the washroom programme. I was looking at the internet the other day. I mean, Jamaica now, they are starting to get rid of latrines in schools, not even in homes. The government implemented a programme to eradicate pit latrines. And instead you come and support it, you will have more credibility, even if you don't support the government. But high share, did I blah? When something is good, say it is good, people will have more respect for you, brothers and sisters. And so, when they say we are not using the Citizenship by Investment Funds in a correct way, I want to tell you that right now in Dominica, there are free hotels being constructed by virtue of the revenue generated from the Citizenship by Investment Programme. Look at, one year and a half ago, Tropical Storm Erica hit us a blow. Ninety-five percent of our GDP was wiped out. One point two billion dollars in damage. Whole communities vanished before our very eyes. One of our best tourism properties was completely devastated. And thanks to this government, less than two years after the storm, Jungle Bay is being rebuilt to provide jobs, sustainable jobs for the people, brothers and sisters. I come from Portsmouth and I can tell you, I am not so old, but I am past my forties. And for the longest while, even before I was born, late in the nineteen forties, every single person telling you that Portsmouth and the Cambridge area is the best area for tourism development. But nobody could do it. Several attempts have been made to develop that area and all failed until Honorable Dr. Roosevelt Skerritt and this government came in. Now we have hotels being built in that area. We have a hotel like a Pinsky Hotel. These guys have chains of hotels around the world. Their marketing budget for their hotels is bigger than the tourism budget for Dominica. So whoever goes to any one of the Kapinski Hotels around the world, in Africa, in Asia, in Europe, will hear about the Kapinski Hotel in Dominica. And when they come to the hotel, they must come to Waterwaven to visit the world-class spas that we have. And that is jobs and monies in your pocket, brothers and sisters. So brothers and sisters, tonight, we are here to interact with you. We are here to share with you. We are here to clear up the misconceptions of the opposition and the detractors and the critics. They demonstrated in Roseau and let me tell you something. You see that, the Prime Minister is a special person there because the spirit of God doesn't dwell with man at all times. You know, and it's not now those fellows provoking us, you know? They block us in Pegua in two thousand and five. The Prime Ministers, they turn the other chicken pass the other way. They come and they burn down Roseau and innocent people's businesses in Roseau. They come again and they were demonstrating, tempting the police to retaliate in the House of Assembly to improve and change the electoral laws to make it clearer, brothers and sisters. The law and all of the cases that have been held, the judges have said that provision of transportation to electors to go to vote in and of itself is not illegal. It is when you provide transportation with a fraudulent intent to convince the voter to vote for somebody who otherwise would not have voted for had it not been for the provision of transportation. That is what it is. So what we try to do is to clarify the law. So right now, I want to tell the Prime Minister that if we have to provide transportation for people to come, tell them to come in their red shirts saying, tell them to come in their red shirts saying labor, so we wouldn't have to run the risk of convincing anybody. We know it's labor rights on the plane, labor rights coming up to vote, and let them come, we not, with no fraudulent intent. We clear, when you come, show your card, I'm going up to vote for Doctor Colin McIntyre, I want to ride on that plane. Simple as that, brothers and sisters. If they don't want to change the law, we not changing the law. Forget about that, forget about that, this is Prime Minister, forget about changing the law. If it's harder than they had and stupid, they stupid. All we doing, we trying to bring a voter ID card. So you will come with your ID card, you show your ID card, your national ID card, and you vote with your ID card. What is wrong with that? But you have Americans around the world and people, French people, the French government sending your ballot for you, no matter where you live, you can be in Timbuktu, American civilians or soldiers in Afghanistan, getting their ballot posted to them wherever they will, Iraq, Afghanistan, wherever they are fighting war. So why do you want to deprive Dominicans from voting? Brothers and sisters, these are the issues we want to bring to you, to clarify the issues. I do not want to stay too long tonight, I've just touched on some salient points to educate you, brothers and sisters. Stay focused and do not let the wolves lead you astray. Because when they take away your bread and cheese from you, they cannot give you crackers, biscuit to eat. Thank you very much.
Let me first of all recognize my friends and colleagues, Honorable Doctor McIntyre, who is our Member of Parliament for Watunwaven. Honorable Ian Douglas, Honorable Marion Blanchard, Honorable Robert Tom. We have also Honorable Peter Saint-Jacques, Honorable Dennis Charles, and our friend Nicole, Nicole Zerchance Estri. And to all of you, the wonderful people of the Roseau Valley, I am very happy to be here in Watunwaven this evening. I will be very short with you this evening, it is my presentation. Because I would like to give you an opportunity to ask your questions and to make your suggestions. I know we have, in coming to Watunwaven, one of the major challenges which you always lamented to us was your road. And in particular, the, the bridge joining with Trifolga and the main road from Watunwaven all the way down to Coptown. We've all recognized that we have started the road. We could have been much further with the road, but understand this. The government has taken a deliberate decision to engage local people to construct this road. We could have given the contract to a big firm to do and denied the opportunities to many of you, the local contractors in this community. So we are going in that pace because we are seeking to carry along with us the number of local contractors because they all have different capacities. And we are ensuring that when the millions are spent on building these roads, these millions will stay in the pockets of the people of Watunwaven. So what you have seen is the first phase of the improvement of this road. And the ministers indicated to you, there is an additional six hundred thousand dollars to be spent. And in the budget coming up, we will put a significant amount of money to take us, take this road all the way down to the bridge down in Coptown. So when you be driving into Watunwaven, you will be driving on a much more improved and safer road. And as far as practically possible, as you've seen, we've started to do, is that where we can widen it, we will widen it. And there are some areas where the edge failures, we will put in some retaining structures and seek to widen the roads, because in some areas, it is almost impossible to widen it. But we'll ensure, as far as practically possible, we will make the road much more accessible to all of us who use there from time to time. And along that road, there are two areas, I believe, two crossings, which we have to improve and allow it to be, um, allow for two vehicles to, to drive on rather than this one vehicle that is currently the case and, and the bending nature of those crossings. So this road project is well on its way, ladies and gentlemen. And I give you the assurance that we will complete this road utilizing local contractors. And I must commend the local contractors. You know, because when the work is not done properly, we criticize. When it's done properly, we have to praise the people. And I know when we started, there were some challenges, but the contractors were very amenable to instructions and guidance. And they were able to work with the engineers in the Ministry of Public Works and get to the level at which we wanted to get to. And I believe all of us could say that we are satisfied with the end product thus far. We also committing, there are some additional roads within the village itself, which we must do. We have Koutang or the inner village road. And then we have the road lower down from, um, from screws that we have to improve. And we also have the upper village to the island house, which we also have to complete. So those three roads, the funds will be available, and we will utilize the local V I C here to assist us in implementing these projects to the benefit of the residents of Watunwaven. So we are aware of your issues, and I personally am aware of your issues. Um, I am not speaking to you in abstract, I'm speaking to you in a practical, knowledgeable way about the way of life of the people of Watunwaven. Washrooms, there are eighteen people, so, now who require washrooms. Those funds will be sent to the V I C, is the V I C college today? V I C college? Um, and eighteen people at eleven thousand dollars each for a washroom, that those funds will be sent before the end of June to the community, um, improvement committee, to assist us in building washrooms for the people of Watunwaven. You had a meeting, which was convened and organized by your partner, Doctor McIntyre, with the small business unit to look at how can we work with you to improve in your small businesses? Because I must say that in Watunwaven, we have very many enterprising people. People who are, and you have more self-employed people in Watunwaven per capita than many parts of the world, I believe. And, and we have to see how we can continue to work with you to sustain your businesses. Sometimes you need a little cash injection to buy more raw, raw material or to buy a new fridge, you know, or to buy more craft, or to, to manufacture more craft, to make more pepper sauce and so forth. And how can we work with you to ensure that the job that you created for yourself and the jobs that you created for your fellow man, we can assist you in maintaining this? What we will do tonight is to make a commitment, because I have seen everybody who attended this meeting. I have, I have, I have a list of what business you engage in, and I also have a list of what you would like the help for. So we have, I have this list, Doctor McIntyre gave me a copy of it. And the amount on this list comes up to five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. That's the request of the people who submitted proposals. I am not here to tell you, I can give you the five fifty-six all at once. But what I'm saying to you is that I'm making a commitment now of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go towards this, and then we will do a second tran to assist you with your small business. I am saying to the vendors, and I raise this matter in cabinet every time, and I raise it all the time, that we have to fix the vending situation in Watunwaven. You know, and when I look at the list, about seventeen of you who are vending up there. And most of you are women, you know, working hard to take care of families. And whether it is rain or sun, you there standing, trying to see what you can sell. There are times you have a good day and there are times you have a bad day. But you wake up the next morning and you set up your stall, waiting for the first tourist to come. You know, so I have the highest personal regard for people who work hard and try to take care of family. And the vendors of Dominica and the vendors of Watunwaven, we have, as a government, must continue to assist you to ensuring that you can have a decent living from this enterprise. Because you have bought a few months of the year to work. And then you have a period where you're out of season, so to speak. And you have to try to make enough money during those months to assist in taking care of yourself in the months when there are no cruise ships coming to the country. Because for some of you, you depend solely on the cruise dollar, on the tourism dollar to survive. And what I would like us to do is to move towards acquiring some of the properties up there and to build uniform stalls for the vendors of Watunwaven. And, and, and have it in the done in a way that is aesthetically appealing, that when the tourists come, the stalls themselves are attractions. You understand? And then you have the amenities, the washrooms, that you can feel free to go. We should not now, in the second decade of the twenty-first century, have vendors have to go and beg somebody to use the washroom and so forth. And I want us to sit down, Doctor McIntyre, immediately, and let us put the plans, and let me tell me how much money we need for us to build the stalls for the, for the vendors of Watunwaven. As the Minister of Finance, I am making a public commitment that the government will provide the funds to construct these facilities for you. I want to say to you, the parents, and to all the young people listening to me, the children of Dominica listening to me, I am very concerned about the tendency of us to take things for granted. When we had, what we call the common entrance, and we had to fight for the few spaces, children studied, parents stayed up with, with candles and the, and the, and the lamps, and to ensure that our children study. We, we forced our children to listen to the news, we make them read. But because we have more opportunities now than we as parents had before, I get the sense that not only children are taking things for granted, but parents are taking things for granted. And I am saying to you, my dear brothers and sisters, that we must take advantage of the opportunity. Because when you acquire an education, it is different from acquiring a car. Nobody can take this from you. Your education will not crash, your qualification will not crash. It is an important aspect of life that can help take you out of poverty, that can help, because you can use as a tool to make a living. And with universal access to secondary education, which means that from two thousand and five, since two thousand and five, every child in Dominica has a space at a secondary school. And this was achieved because this government recognized the importance of education and recognized that education should not be for a few people in Dominica, that education must be made available to everybody irrespective of your station in life, irrespective of the circumstances of your family. And when I went to the cabinet in two thousand and two as the Minister of Education, and I said to the cabinet, I want to launch a program to achieve universal access to secondary education by two thousand and seven, we were able to frontload the investments in education and achieved it two years in advance, in two thousand and five. And it was a deliberate attempt, because coming from the, the principles of Dominica were about that everybody must be subjected to the opportunities, we had to address this. The state college, for example, and all the young people want a state college, and you dress nicely, and you have this, 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 this splashing, um, facility. That did not come just because it is government's responsibility, because we didn't have it before. We didn't have it before. But we recognized that our children needed to have access to education beyond secondary school. And when I taught at the college, before we got the C X E results, the college had already determined how many students it will accept at the college. And when, as fate would have it, I became the Minister of Education a few years later. And immediately upon becoming Minister of Education, I commissioned a study to examine for me the situation confronting tertiary education in Dominica. And that study was done by Doctor, by Doctor Thomas, a Dominican, and Doctor Donald Peters. And they came back and they told me in a report, a very thick report, that only seven percent of all high school graduates in Dominica had access to the college. Seven percent. And it is not because the rest of them did not meet the qualifications to enter the college, but because of the way the system operated. And I used to see a number of children from across Dominica, the children of farmers, the children of, of, of the, of the unemployed, who worked hard, got their grades at C X E. And because they came late for registration, they missed being part of the maximum number of students. And what I used to do, uh, because I was assigned to register students, I would register students without the principal knowing. And every year, the years I spent teaching at the college, I would register about twenty to thirty people. And then I would tell Mr. Volney, maybe later down in the term, in semester, that I registered additional students. And so, I felt that if the Lord gave me the opportunity now as Minister for Education, I have to do something about it. And when I went to the college, not very long ago, I was the only person from my entire constituency, not only, not only from Vickers, but the whole of my constituency at the college for two years. Out of a hundred and twenty-two students who graduated at the grammar school, only twenty of us made it to the college, and grammar school in those days was the, the secondary school. So a hundred and two of my comrades did not go to college. And we were able to address this problem in a practical manner by consolidating those colleges, creating the state college, and investing in the infrastructure, investing in the training of people. And today, we have set the foundation for there to be one hundred percent access to the state college, providing that you, you, you acquire the minimum entry requirements to enter the college. And as we speak, as we speak, there is about ninety percent of all high school graduates now attending the college as compared to seven percent when we came into office. And so when, when people sit to ask, what are we doing for the young people? My friends, there is nothing more you can do for a young person by giving him an opportunity to attend school. There is nothing you can do more and better for a child who comes from, if it's a parent, a single family home, who's struggling to make life, to make, and to turn that child into a doctor, to turn a child into an agriculturist, to turn a child into a surveyor, and to give him the opportunity to look at the world as his, as his marketplace and make a living out of it. That's what we have been able to do. I'm looking at the numbers today. And for so far, for the financial year, we have spent fifteen million dollars on students studying overseas. Fifteen million dollars. Two weeks ago, I gave the Ministry of Education seven point two million dollars to pay for Australians in Grahamlin and, and, and Midwestern and Uwi and elsewhere, helping the US economy because we sent quite a few millions to them. And then people say, what are we doing for the young people? Fifteen million dollars. And I can tell you that these things never used to happen, it was who you knew, knew, and what surname you carried in Dominica to have gotten opportunities for them. That's why there are people in Dominica who do not like me because of what I have done to raise the standard of the working class people of Dominica. But I am, who? But I am who want to be vexed with because I'm helping people who in need of help. I say to them always that you are not being vexed with me, upset with me, I am just an instrument. I am just an instrument. I am the Prime Minister today, I can be, I can, I will, I will move up, move sometime. But when, as long as I'm there, I will do what I have to do to help the people of this country. And that's why I say to the young people, that when you get a scholarship, when you get a grant from the government, do not go to this people's country and form the fool. Stay in school, stay in school and be positive minded people. Do not engage yourself in unnecessary foolish talk. Anything that is not going to elevate you, elevate your mind, enlighten you, you should not engage yourself in it. So we are committed to this. And in respect to our diplomatic relations, for example, when we establish relations with China, and China asked me, well, you know, how can I help, how can we help Dominica, how can we work in Dominica? The first request I made of China, the first was in the hospital, it was in the stadium, it was in the west coast road. The first request I made of China was for scholarships for young people in Dominica. I said, I want my young Dominicans to learn Chinese or Mandarin. So we can place them in a category where in the world they would be able to attract jobs. And so far, since the establishment of diplomatic relations some thirteen years ago, we have sent over a hundred young people to study on full-time scholarships in the People's Republic of China. And likewise, in Morocco and other countries, which we have established relations with in recent time. People in the country, they ask for this and they ask for that. But everything you ask for, there's a cost to it. And everybody knows what the government should do and should not do. But nobody is telling the government, well, how can you raise the money to do these things? And as they say, it is he who is in the kitchen who can fill the heat. And the constitutionally country places on the Minister of Finance the responsibility to fetch the money to do what the country requires to be done. And it is not an easy task, because our economy is still small. The number of us who pay direct taxes is not large, because with the changes we have made in the income tax of Dominica, we have removed thousands of people from the tax bracket in our country. We increased the tax threshold from about five thousand when we came in to now where it stands twenty-five thousand dollars. So which means that anybody in Dominica who is earning twenty-five thousand dollars a year or less pays no income tax in Dominica. And if you go beyond that, a couple hundred dollars. So the average public servant may pay a couple hundred dollars in taxes. Because we've reduced the bands, the rates, and we've increased the tax threshold. So if you are earning forty thousand dollars in the public service, the first twenty-five thousand is not taxed. You only tax on the fifteen thousand. And we've moved from a more consumption tax approach, which means that you, you pay taxes based on how much you consume. Before that, there were direct taxes. We still have consumption tax at twenty-five and forty percent. All of those taxes were removed. So in respect to the consumption tax, you pay based on how much you consume. You understand? And farmers don't pay any taxes, income tax in Dominica. And of course, the vendors would always tell us they don't make no money, so they'll fall below the twenty-five thousand. One thing is very, one thing with vendors, the most, everything I went to vendor, they never make money, you know? You know, like hocksters too, I make nothing, all my produce got, got rotten on the boat, the boat was, the engine go bad and so on. And then you go to their, to their homes, they have a big home, they have a bus, they have a car, they have a van, they have a, they have a supermarket, they have a restaurant, they have a guest house. But their produce always get rot, no spoil, you know, on the boat and so forth. But they're my friends, so I can speak like that, you know? But seriously. So we do not have many people paying taxes. But we have to run the hospitals. You want more police officers in the streets? You want to ensure that when your children go to school, that they have teachers to teach you? You want better roads? There's small business money. Those of you who are sixty and older, and those of you who are eighteen and younger, don't pay anything at the hospital, but somebody has to pay for it. And I'm, I am now battling as a Minister of Finance. Because in the upcoming budget, the Ministry of Health is asking for five million dollars more to buy medicines. On top of what we gave them last year, they're asking for another five million dollars to buy more medication. And part of this request is that a number of people who are suffering from various forms of cancer, the medication you buy, the hospital will give it to you for free. So the government is now going to take a decision. So those of you who suffer from diabetes and, and, um, cancer, to make those drugs available to our citizens free of charge. Because we recognize that these drugs are critical to somewhat to the patient's well-being. So we now have to include five million dollars more in this year's budget. Solid waste is asking for more money because it's, most of you in Dominica are not managing your waste properly. You want to send everything to the government to pick up for you and to take the lab ass, when half of it could stay in your backyard in a compost. Everybody say that is true, that is true. You know? I am, I am not here as a Prime Minister, I am here as one of you speaking to us as a family, you know, we're family, so I'm speaking with you, we engage in, we have a conversation. So I have now to increase the budget for solid waste. Education is asking for more money. And one of the issues now with education is that the C X E is now going to have examinations online. And the Ministry of Education, the government now must buy computers for every secondary school in Dominica. So we now have to go and buy new computers and have centers established with recurrent costs, because you can't have a computer room and it's closed and, and you're not, you're not maintaining it. You need to have staff to maintain it, you need to have people to, to fix them if they get bad. So there is not only going to be a capital cost to these requests, there's going to have to be a recurring cost. Understand what I'm saying? Tourism. Minister Chong mentioned to you that in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, two hu- two, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and eight cruise tourists came to Dominica. But we did not sit on our heads in Roseau and, 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 and hope that it would be, it would be increased. We have to do a number of investments. So when people talk foolishly in Dominica, talking about, oh, government doing roads all over and roads and so on, these things are critical for a tourism infrastructure. We may believe that a tourist wants the stuff in a natural way, yes, but he wants to have a proper toilet next to it. He wants him to have a towel, a clean white towel. Because you can't have a black towel or a brown towel, because the tourist wants to know whether it is clean. And he can't know whether it is, it is clean or dirty if a brown or black towel. So we have to invest in the infrastructure, enhance the tourism sites in order for our numbers to get up. And the minister and, and, and all of us, we have to go and engage the cruise lines and to show them what we have done, invite them to Dominica to come and see what we have done. And as a result of this spending, we've seen this year, in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen cruise season, over four hundred and twenty-two thousand cruise passengers would come to Dominica. And what that means to you, because the majority of them will come to the valley. And we have to ensure, Dr. Mag, that we help them to get as many dollars as possible from the tourists who come, so we can showcase what we have in Dominica. But my question to you, the vendors, you know, let us sell what we make in Dominica. Don't buy something from a foreign country and scratch the name all of a sudden and write Dominica over it. We have to, and we have to sell and showcase what we have in Dominica. So the Ministry of Tourism is asking for the increase in the marketing budget. And I am prepared as a Minister of Finance to increase the marketing budget, because we have to continue promoting our country in order to bring the returns to our country. So you're talking about a significant increase that ministries are asking, and the number, number of the ministries asking for increasing in, in spending. How do we get this money from? When a handful of us who work pay taxes, the majority don't. And I have not met one Dominican, one Dominican who has told me, I love to pay taxes, scary. And, 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 and in this budget, I mean, put in one or two for us inside there. I have not met one Dominican. Including myself, I complain about the government taxing me too much. Because when I get my, my, my pay slip and so forth, and you know, the government, the first thing they take is the tax, you know? They don't care what you have to do after that, the first thing they take is the tax. Before you get your salary, they take the money already. I'm saying, well, you taxing me too much, I mean, all the work I'm doing, you know, my salary should be much higher than what I'm, I'm getting. But the reality is, there is a certain point at which you can tax people. And I am not in the business of overtaxing people. And I recognize that Dominicans are not in a position to pay increased taxation. So how do we go about financing the budget? When manufacturers want more money at a cheaper rate? People in the tourism business want more, more money at a cheaper rate? So we have to put fifteen million dollars in the, in, in aid bank at three percent? Farmers say that they want some money at a cheaper rate, we're going to put money, ten million dollars in the aid bank? The manufacturers are asking, and in the budget, I'm going to put a significant sum for manufacturers at the same three percent? What could I have done with this fifteen plus ten, twenty-five million dollars? Where this money going to come from? And when you contract loans, like all of us contract loans, you have to give the bank or the credit union your pay slip. And on the loan application form, those things that which are not captured in the pay slip, the deductions, they'll have it in, 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 in a checkbox to tell you rent, how much you paying for rent? How much you paying for gas every day? How much you paying for light? How much you paying for water? To see whether you are in a position to be able to contract a loan, because your salary must be able to pay for the loan you're taking. You can't go and tell them that, you know, sometimes my daughter in America has sent me some money. That can't work. They, they will give you a loan based on how much you're making. And I'm saying to you, my dear brothers and sisters, that it is no different on how the government functions. That if we request a loan from the World Bank, we must be able to show them, show them how we're going to pay it, whether we have the means to pay it. That is why Mister, Minister Douglas told you, in nineteen ninety-nine, there was no responsible financial institution who would have lent the government money in nineteen ninety-nine. Because when the Caribbean Development Bank and the World Bank and all these important institutions would see your balance sheet, they would tell you, Mister Government, we cannot give you money because you do not have the means to pay. And in a desperate, in desperate desperation, you do desperate things, and it has cost these people dearly. And that's why we have to be very careful as citizens what we ask our government to do. Because some of the things we ask our government to do in this country can place us in a difficult situation. Because you may ask the government for something, and when I study, I say, well, if I do that, I'll get plenty of votes. But what's going to happen five years down the road? When the chicken comes, comes to roost? When the grace period for the loan has ended and you don't start paying, how are you going to pay? You now have to go back to an austerity program. Impose levy, impose taxes. You remember one year, we even imposed a, 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 a tax on bicycles? A difficult period. For us who have taken four percent on people's salary every month, the levy, you remember the levy? Number of taxes to, 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 to make things right. And the people of this country suffered. All of us suffered. We saw a dramatic decline in our way of life. Poverty increased. And we have systematically gone about addressing the matter. And so we have to be very, very careful as citizens of our country for asking our government for things that cannot be done. And this is why, my dear brothers and sisters, because you can raise funding revenue through taxes or the sale of assets, land and so forth, some grants and loans. And I can tell you, I have been around for some time. Outside of Ralph Gonzalez in St. Vincent and Grenadines, I'm the longest person around the table of heads of government in Carribean. So I've been around for some time. And I have never seen the world more uncertain as it is now than ever before. Countries now are becoming, becoming very individualistic. You understand? And there's some parts of the world where there are challenges. So it means therefore we have to recognize that this ship called Dominica, we now have to take our oars and row our boat by ourselves. That what we, what we want to achieve for our country must be done by Dominicans. Because where you would have gotten fifty or sixty million dollars in grants, that is no longer available. And you can't impose additional taxes, and if you go and borrow recklessly, you have to, you'll pay for it one day. Just imagine some of us, we'll find ourselves with financial difficulties. You know, somebody falls sick in our, in our home, we had to find a good money to help out and so forth. You know, your daughter overseas lost her job, she, 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 she wanted a little rent money, you know, you have nothing. You know, you have nothing in the credit you're going to take for, you go to all those money giving companies. And you take your ring, your wedding ring, and you put it inside there. Am I talking about things we know? I walk the streets, you know, I know what happened in Dominica, you know, I shop, you know. I know the price of goods. I know where people live. And this is why we are doing things to assist you in creating a better way of life for yourself. And unfortunately, everything we try to do to help and improve the way of life, there are some who want to mash it up and criticize us. And, you know, we have to, we have to take, we have to take the discourse about the future of Dominica to a higher level. It can't be done by shouting on radio stations. It can't be done by lighting fires in the country. Present your case, articulate your views, and let ideas contend. There must be a battle of ideas. If the government is doing something that you oppose, what is the practical alternative? It is not sufficient just say, well, the government shouldn't do that. What is the alternative? That's how we engage ourselves. And if at the end of the day you have presented a constructive alternative, which the government can utilize, will utilize it? Will utilize it? But I listen to people on the other side and trying to find out what ideas do you have? Because I've always maintained, this government does not have all the ideas of how to build Dominica. You understand? So we have to recognize, and that's why I come to the point, my dear brothers and sisters, about this much talked about CBI, Citizen's Investment Program. Now, Dominica is considered as this third world, you know, they have third world, first world, second world and third world. And there is developed and developing countries. And now they have now a new term, emerging economies. So we are a developing country. And if countries like the United States or America, which is the world's largest economy, has its own immigration program, where you can invest in a project, so just like what we do in Dominica, a project to create jobs for people in inner cities of America. By investing half a million US dollars, you can get your green card. What about like Dominica for small economy? With no oil. America has oil. America has natural gas. There are all sorts of things, but they recognize that notwithstanding the fact that they are the world's largest economy, notwithstanding the fact that they have a large economy, internal tax base and so forth, it still was not enough to create the jobs and the way of improvement to the way of life of the American citizens. So they have gone to a synergy program. Malta, who is in the European Union, has a program where you invest about 650,000 euros and you become a citizen not only of Malta but the European Union. Because you now have access, free access to all the European countries. And Malta has a visa-free program in United States of America. But Malta has a program. Cyprus has a program. Cyprus is in European Union. Students do their research, know geography. So if we want to have a discussion about CBI, let us have a serious, transparent and honest discussion about it. And if these countries recognize the importance of it and the International Monetary Fund has cited this program as a critical element of our country's economy, not only Dominica, but all the countries which have such a program. And people make it look like, you know, it's a bad thing to have it and we collude with people who do not even know where Dominica was, never been to Dominica, to seek to destroy our way of life. And where is our patriotic, where is our patriotic spirit? Our national spirit in defending the motherland, in defending our country? That instead of we defending our country, we go in dark rooms with people who have no interest in our way of life to undermine our program and to undermine our economy. Because, you know, they started the campaign, it will continue. I have seen them rehearsing the same stories, unedited. Not even recognizing, okay, well, the government has done A, B, C, D. Same thing that they had, same article they had five months ago, six months ago, a year, they are rehearsing it. And I'm saying to you, all the people of Dominica, I'm saying to you, people of Dominica, all of us, red, white, blue and green, whatever color we are, let me tell you something. Understand this. This is not about Roosevelt's character. This is about Dominica and the future of our children. The future of our country and the well-being of our country. Because our economy cannot sustain the demands that we place on it. And the CBI, the resources from that, is critical to our well-being. So I'm saying to you, my dear friends, we must learn to put Dominica first. We can have our internal differences and we have to express them. But why whenever some people speak in Dominica, whenever they are quoted anywhere in the world, it's something negative? I have my issues with Dominica, yes, I may have my issues, but you'll never hear me speaking ill of Dominica. And not because of the prime minister of the country. So I'm putting to you, my dear brothers and sisters, that we have to elevate the discourse in this country. Likewise, people talk about electoral reform and this law didn't pass and so forth. I mean, men are saying, no election without electoral reform. Men have candlelight vigil in Dominica. Men writing to all some international regional organizations saying that they want electoral reform. Now, but how? You know, because children, they can't use language and so forth. Because, I mean, if people have insensible discussions and so on, but this thing really pisses me off sometimes, the level of discourse we have in the country. Now, as it stands now, my dear brothers and sisters, there is no law in Dominica which gives the Electoral Commission the authority to issue national ID cards. How are you going to do it if they don't have no laws to do it? How are you going to do it? And after we have put in over $5 million in electoral reform, we say we don't want it again. And then they are preying on the ignorance of some in our country and misrepresenting facts. Reading half a sentence rather than reading the full sentence. And, you know, and the problem with us in Dominica is that there are just too many of us who do not read for ourselves. We hear something, we believe it, once it suits our argument. And the issue about bringing voters and so forth. There is no law in Dominica that prevents or gives somebody a right to go and vote. There is also case law, the OICs Supreme Court has made it very clear in its ruling. And on election matters, the OICs Supreme Court is the final court. Which says that the main provision of transportation to somebody to vote, whether it is from overseas or within the country, is not illegal. And all we are seeking to do was to put that in domestic law, because it is already law. Because the ruling of the court, especially the final court, is law. But what we're going to say in the amendment, we say unless if it is done with a corrupt intent. Unless if it is done with a corrupt intent. And we have given the OICs Supreme Court jurisdiction in America. These amendments were reviewed by international experts. The United Focus Party has two members on the commission and they had those amendments for months. And I am satisfied that Mr. Linton had a copy of it for months. That's why you see, that's why the first thing I told you about the children is that go to school and stay in school. This is serious business. And when you are in such serious positions, you have to have a basic knowledge of something. And if you do not have it, then speak to people who are experts at that and let them tell you. Because you will always stop learning when you are dead, when in a coffin. Until such time, education is continuous. So that's basically what we try to do. And you have people parroting all this and that, we will do the guys treating all these things. So if we want to have a serious discussion of the matter, let's have a serious discussion of the matter, my dear sister. But I want to thank you very much for being here this evening and to engage ourselves in discussion. To say to you that every budget we go to parliament with, there's always a justification for taxes. Because you build a road, Silicon Airport Road, we took a loan to build the airport road, the Coast Liverpool Highway. And I have an estimate, therefore I measure public works just for the, for a section of the retaining wall in bells. What was it, 25 or so or 45 million dollars? Where you see the drums in bells, just the section. 45 million dollars to build a retaining wall. So it's not an easy task, my friends. We can make demands, we can make requests, but we have to be logical in our requests. And always look at it, when your children make requests on you, can you afford all the requests that you're making? And sometimes you tell your child, well, if you do well in school, I'll buy a bicycle for you. And then somebody, something happened in the house, you know, a window break and you have to go buy the Chinese and buy some windows. Or somebody broke the arm or your daughter is sick in America, you have to send the money for her because things start in America. And you have to tell the child, you know, you know, my mother is sending money for her sister in America because she wasn't well or your sister broke her arm and so on. That's how it is. There are many of us who might want a new motor car. But we just had a good extension in our house, we just changed the cupboards in our house, took a cupboards. We had to replace it. So we had to drive a whole car for the time being. Some of us, we want a new sofa and a new living room set. Because our children, our babies, they throw milk on it and juice on it and all the things on it. And what we do is that we take a sheet and we cover it for the time being. That's what we do. That's what it is. Some of us, actually in Dominica, went to buy a new outfit, boy checking, boy thinks that they can't go buy a new outfit and so on. You have to, darling, you have to go in the wardrobe and get the old things and put it back. That's how it is. So running the country, my dear brothers and sisters, is no different the way you run your family, you know. You understand? And if you do not manage your resources properly, if you go and buy things that you can't afford, you will force yourselves to go to these money lending institutions and borrow money and then you can't pay it. So my advice to all of us is to budget wisely. Be prudent, be responsible. Live within your means. If it is a used car you can buy, don't go and buy a new one. Not because your neighbor has a new car, you should have a new car. If you never can afford it or you want to live, treat it as good for him, buy a little car, wash it every day. If it's only two of you in the house, you don't need a four-bedroom house. Be the two-bedroom. If when you have children, you put in an extra room, but don't put a big mortgage in your back and so forth and 90% of your salary going to the mortgage, what are you going to eat? Not because they're telling you, put $0 down and you can take a big screen TV. They tell you $1 down. And you say, what? $1 down? And then we, now to buy a TV now, it's about five pages of contract to sign. And then the word's so small, that even if you have, even if you have your best glasses in the world, you can't read that. And you sign this thing now. And then when the legal grace period ends, you say, that happened, you know? But you watch anything in the smart TV and so on and you can download things online and watch all kind of movies and so on. But you don't pay for it, darling. Huh? You don't pay for it? So we have to manage our resources prudently. That's what the government is doing. That is why when somebody asks for some things, I look at it, I say, I can't, I can't do it. This is why whenever I make a promise publicly or privately, I know we can keep it. So it may take a little longer. But whenever I say something, I know I have the means of delivering to the people of this country. Because it is, finally, I can make outlandish commitments and gain political ground and political support. But it is not to the benefit of the people of Dominica. And we cannot always place political expediency ahead of the well-being of our country. Because the decision you take today, if it is a bad decision, it will affect succeeding generations. So, my dear brothers and sisters, thank you very much for being here and God bless.